I just want to make sure you all can hear me. Okay, good. Okay.
Everybody is on. So I will call tonight's special meeting to order. Welcome to everyone who has joined us tonight. I'll start with talking about meeting logistics. Anyone who's joining remotely, please change your name display to be your first and last name. So we know who we're talking to and who's talking to us. And when you speak, please start by stating your name and where you live. We recommend that you keep your comments and questions to under three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments germane to that topic. And if you wish to speak, you must be called on by the mayor. Once you're called on, you may make a statement or ask questions. But if you have multiple statements or questions, please group them all together because we generally don't engage in back and forth conversation in that stage of the meeting. And if you speak out of turn, discuss non-german topics or go on too long, you may be reminded of the need to do so. First item is to approve the agenda. I assume council members are satisfied with the agenda as it's prepared. Okay, we'll deem the meeting agenda approved. Next, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. All the, all the rules for addressing the council remain in place, except that we provide a time limit of five minutes. And before we do that, I will ask councilors Gill and Brown to introduce themselves since they're appearing remotely.
Hi, Carrie Brown, District Three.
Hello, Adrian Gill, District One.
Okay, thank you. Anybody online or in the room would like to address the council? Steve?
Yeah, good evening. Steven Whitaker, Montpelier. I filed the open meeting law violation notice regarding the Whiteburg contract. To be very clear, this message is not about surprise, blame, or embarrassment. It's about using this 14-day cure window the law gives us to take a breath, correct course, and make sure Montpelier's decisions are legally sound and fiscally responsible. This has the potential to be a great example of how Vermont's open meeting law works, or doesn't, depending on how you choose to act tonight. The law gives us a chance to turn a mistake into a model of accountability and transparency. If you embrace that opportunity, you'll make us proud, showing that council values integrity and process as much as outcomes. What makes this case especially troubling is that the contract dated September 29, or date the cover letter, Stephanie's cover letter dated September 29, is an identical contract to the one the council approved on October 8th after roughly an hour and a half executive session. There were apparently no edits, no track changes, no evidence of any negotiation. That tells us the council wasn't in that long executive session to bargain or revise the contract because it didn't change. The document had been here in city officials' hands for at least nine days, yet there was no public review, no open discussion, no legal justification for the secrecy. That's precisely the kind of situation Vermont's open meeting law was written to prevent. Decisions made ahead of time, out of sight, then ratified in minutes, with the public left in the dark. The Whiteburg agreement pays them 250 an hour for up to 50,000, even more with any extensions, and then adds a 3% bonus calculated on any increase in the city's grand list value capped at 300,000 over the next 10 years. That's a classic contingent or success-based fee. Under HUD's procurement handbook and federal regulations specifically 2 CFR 200.319 and 200.459, contracts tied to future value or success are prohibited for any federally assisted projects. They're considered conflicts of interest. Because Montpelier receives federal funds through that Montpelier Housing Authority, and because the city is now seeking a CDBG Dr. grant, the same standards apply here. Reaffirming that contract tonight could make the city ineligible for federal funding, CDBG, Northern Borders Regional Commission, or even force repayment later. That's a serious risk for a city our size already in debt. The good news is that acknowledging the open meeting law violation automatically voids the vote and the contract. That means you don't have to rescind it or suspend it. You can simply acknowledge the violation, take no further action on that agreement tonight, and move forward with a clean process. Whiteburg can continue to be paid hourly for the work already authorized until or if another contract is approved with or without competitive bidding. Now, what do we do with this pause? Two steps that align perfectly with state and federal priorities. First, change the CDBG Dr. application from an implementation grant to a planning grant. A $2 million resilience planning grant would fund the Phase Two Master Planning Environmental and Traffic Studies in a genuine public participation process to be completed before any developer solicitation. It would also cure the city plans procedural issues now being appealed in court under 24 VSA 4476. And I think it's important, although procedural issue is not substantive issues. There are flaws with the substance of the plan that would still be litigated. And I think it's important to say this out loud. For all intents, no pun intended, our unhoused residents are still intense, blood impacted. When the July 2023 flood occurred, many people lost store inventory and homes, and the unhoused had no homes to lose, no safety net to recover from. More than two years later, they remain in crisis as if the flood has just happened. The dignity and trust we extended to flooded business owners, homeowners, and grant recipients after the flood is the same dignity and support we owe our unhoused neighbors. This planning window is a chance to plant those seeds to give people the first rung up on a ladder towards stability as part of the country club road remediation resilience work. We can make housing preparedness and human dignity parts of the same recovery plan. Second, apply for a better connections grant, about 100,000 from Btrans, ACCD, and A and R combined. That grant has a pre-application and interview deadline, October 24, which I think is coming right up this week. Full application due October 31. It's specifically meant for multi-motor path connectivity and stormwater planning. This would let us study a shared use path. Since I also get to speak on my
Thank you, Steve.
But since I get to speak on my complaint, I'll just finish my comments as that.
Thank you, Steve. Your time is up. Is there anybody else?
To show that Montpelier's government still works the way it's supposed to.
Steve, you're going to need to stop talking now.
Openly, honestly, and in service of the public.
Steve, you're out of order.
You're out of order, Mayor. You're corrupt.
Is there anybody else in the room or in the room would like to be heard? Anthony?
Yes, Anthony Arapino.
Please step up to the table.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Would this be general business along the lines that Mr. Whitaker was just speaking about? Or would this be, isn't there an agenda item about the Whiteburg contract process?
There's an agenda item relating to the complaint about an alleged open meeting violation. So if you want to talk about that, you should wait. If you want to talk about something else, then you're in the right place to do it.
Okay, I will wait to speak on behalf of my clients on that subject matter and appreciate the opportunity to speak to that. Hopefully before the DRB meeting starts at seven. But in my personal capacity and therapy, no, for Savin Street, I do want to follow up with a word of thanks. A couple meetings ago, I came to you with some concerns about training for the DRB Development Review Board. And I see from follow-up meetings from that that you were able to identify a Vermont League of Cities and Towns training for our DRB. And I appreciate that follow-through from the council. I think that training is going to make the process of going through the DRB more fulfilling for the hardworking community members who have volunteered to serve on the DRB, as well as for the applicants whose rights are affected by DRB decisions, and the neighbors and other members of the community who are counting on the DRB to do their jobs. So I look forward to a chance to address the meeting agenda later, but I do want to thank you for the follow-up of my earlier public comment. So.
Excellent. Anybody else in the room or online who's seeking to address the council? Okay. We can move to the next agenda item, which has to do with, with meeting conduct. And this is something that I requested that we put on the agenda for tonight. Because at our last meeting, what we observed, what I saw was behavior that is worse than I've ever seen at a council meeting either during the time I've been on the council or in the 20 or 30 years that I've been attending council meetings. And I don't want to go into any great detail about it, but I do want to point out that we have a whole set of norms and expectations relating to conduct at meetings. And I want to read some of those to people and ask everybody to to read, read them in the entirety before our next meeting. Our group norms for the city council include speak our truth in a respectful manner, using our finest and kindest words, respect others and allow them to talk without interruption, focus on the issues, don't personalize discussions, avoid making personal attacks on other council members and city staff at meetings and with the media, focus on ideas, not people. And then from the rules of conduct at public meetings that include Rule Three decorum to be maintained. City council meetings shall be conducted in a courteous manner. Members of the public and council members will, will be allowed to state their opinion, positions in an atmosphere free of slander, ad hominem attacks, and threats of violence, the use of slanderous, obscene, or profane language, personally abusive attacks upon any person, physical violence or the threat thereof, or other louder boisterous behavior which disturbs or otherwise disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting, and a failure to comply with any decision or order of the mayor or a majority of the council shall constitute a disturbance. Personally abusive attacks include insults, discourteous comments, and defamatory statements. So I don't, I'm not going to belabor the, belabor the point, but I think we all could stand to give serious consideration to these expectations which have been adopted by the council, are in the council handbook, and are really a bare minimum of what we should expect of ourselves and each other too, as we come here to do the public's business. I don't know if anyone else has any comments or ready to move on. All right. I'll move on to item six, allegation of an open meeting law violation. Oh, I'm sorry. Kwan, Kwan.
Sandy, that's too important on Savin Street. I do not want to sound like a smart aleck at all, but I just, I, I would expect that that also includes following state statutes and also following city rules such as procurement rules would be included in the correct procedure of the city council.
Thank you. All right. Item six, allegation of open meeting law violation. The purpose of calling tonight's special meeting is that we perceive an allegation of a violation of the open meeting law. We're required by state statute to to hold a hearing and consider the allegation within 10 days, and today is the 10th day of receiving the complaint to, to do that. So what I anticipate we'll, we'll do is have a brief discussion of what the allegations are. Mr. Whitaker, I could call on you for three minutes to lay out what your complaint is, although all members of the council have received your written complaint, which is greater length than that. And then from there, I anticipate that this will be subject to the provision of 1 VSA Section 313 A1 because there's a possibility of civil litigation. And we expect to require confidential attorney-client communications. So we'll have a discussion about whether the grounds for executive session are met. But I'll leave it at that. Mr. Whitaker?
In nutshell, without reading it because it won't take more than three minutes. But I'll also note that when people put things on the agenda, they're typically not limited to three minutes when it's their item on the agenda. You often let people ramble on for 10 or 20. So just noting that. But the main thing is that you didn't warn that there was going to be a vote. You didn't share the document ahead of time, as is traditional practice. You didn't share the sole source justification as is required by city and state procurement policies. Those are all prerequisites. You have to warn when you got, got an action item on the agenda, you have to warn it, you're going to take action. You didn't do that. So you also didn't share the documents, which would have set off a lot of alarms. So it looks intentional to you tried to pull a fast one, and you didn't get away with it. That's it.
Thank you. Anthony?
Thank you. Anthony Arapino, I'm here speaking on behalf of my counsel client, Alan Goldman, and along with his partner Doug Sorese, our owners of Savin's pasture. And of course, Alan's a longtime resident of the community and developer here as well, who owns some other really important parts of our housing stock and land that has potential to contribute to that. I want to start by saying that my client understands the pressure that a council feels. We do have a housing crisis. People want to see more units being added to our housing stock. And my client is wanting to be part of that solution and has been working with city officials, going all the way back to the 2018 TIP application that included Savin's pasture. There's a potential for that. We understand that city residents are going impatient to see a return on the $3 million investment in Country Club Road, the $500,000 in fees paid to Whiteburg so far, and the substantial amount of time the council and the public have spent trying to come up with a solution. City residents are also trying to come to terms with the realization that many more millions of dollars than we have and that we might even be able to get from grants are going to be needed to develop at Savin's pasture. So I understand those concerns. I understand that you've heard about analysis paralysis. But it would be a mistake to try to recover some of the time that has been lost in process heretofore by rushing through what is a really critical decision about committing substantial amount of taxpayer dollars to a very specific direction with a very specific contractor, who has a very specific history with the community, and it is not a history that all feel good about in terms of their involvement. The lack of transparency risks eroding public trust in the council process, as well as public support for next steps at CPR. This is a contract that the voters deserved a chance to weigh in on on the question of whether Whiteburg was the right contractor for this stage in the process, whether this is a situation where single-source contracts are appropriate, and also whether the terms of the contract align with the city's objectives and values in this moment. The lack of warning of this discussion and advanced availability of the contract raises serious concerns under the open meeting law that you've heard about. There are members of this community who understand development, who understand real estate sales, who understand planning, and it's wrong to suggest that hearing from those members of the public before voting on this contract would not have provided the council with useful information before taking that decision. There's also concern about the late-night sessions, which I'm sure you share because you all have lives and jobs. These are not the kind of decisions that should be made just shy of midnight when councillors are tired and many members of the public have already logged off the meeting. And there's also concern about executive session, which is where a lot of the discussion seems to have taken place. But that is outside of the public and not with the public's input. Three minutes seems like a very short amount of time to talk about a very important issue to the city. So I'm hoping that your decision tonight will result in an opportunity for us to come back and talk about the substance of the contract, not just the process. And I do want to just add one other thing. I'm very glad to see Mike Tarrant here as an attorney for the city. As a matter of process, I also want to say it's unfortunate that you voted on a contract which was this complex without having the attorney available to the decision makers. It's great for the attorney to be able, available to the city staff.
That's your time, Anthony.
To make the decisions, and it makes sense for a lawyer here on the night you're making the decision, not just in advance.
You get the point. Thank you. Vicki?
I'm not in favor of this consulting thing at all, particularly because it seems as though there's a serious conflict of interest. And we can't afford to continue to spend money on constant consultants and not get anything ever done. But this in particular seems really not good, and the process was really not open to all people knowing about it. Executive sessions at midnight, I don't think I, I don't think they're, they're they prove to be very successful. And I'm just totally against this particular contract with the same. It just is such a conflict of interest, and we need to get away from those. And it just, it's, it doesn't feel right. None of, nothing about this feels right.
Thanks, Vicki. Joe?
All right, can you hear me?
There, you're unmuted. Yes, I want to remind you that what's before the council today is the question about the complaint alleging a violation of the open meeting law. Not the listing of the contract.
And I just want to concur with Anthony Arapino's statements earlier. And I do think that the fact that you guys went into executive session so late was certainly not And I do think that the fact that you guys went into executive session so late was certainly not beneficial to the members of the public. I mean, a lot of us try and follow as much as we can, but having that consequential of a decision without the public even seeing the contract until after the fact. And I honestly think that a real estate attorney should have reviewed that because it's so preferential to White and Burke. So that's just my comments.
Thanks, Anthony. I'll point out to you and to the members of the public that if you, if you've looked at the agenda for this Wednesday's meeting, you'll see that we've kind of flipped the way we put items on the agenda. So the the things that we can get through easily, like uh the consent agenda. We put to the end and the items to take, we expect to be more substantive and uh have present more challenging content to be at the beginning. We're going to try that and see how that works. And I'm hopeful that that it'll work and work for the council and for the public. Jocelyn.
Hello, Jocelyn Wilcheck from the Savin Street neighborhood. Um, with respect to the open meeting law violation, I don't see how that contract fits any of the exceptions for executive session. It does not contain confidential information. It is not a competitive document. It's not putting the city at a disadvantage. Um, it doesn't involve um, hiring somebody as an employee. I have to say I'm really disappointed in whatever city staff member um, bought, presented it to the city council as it should go into executive session or presented it to our councils in no bid contract. That is a job that our city staff needs to be facilitating on their end to serve up to the city council options. City council members are volunteers. We mostly volunteers. We need to look to the city staff to do the hard work to get various proposals in front of us. Especially with White and Burke, which does not have the best track record. So A, I think it's possibly an open meeting law violation, but two, even if it isn't, I think with this project in particular, where taxpayers aren't getting anything before we are giving consultants any more money. You should err on the side of doing things in public, even though there's a little risk to that. I would err on the side of that and I would push the city staff. It is unacceptable to have any no bid contracts in this project. It's possible that you ask for bids and only one company bids, but at least give us a fighting chance. And um, I echo the, that there should be a stop for meetings much earlier than midnight. We want to keep our city councillors. That's hard enough to do and um, we don't want you making decisions at that hour. So I don't know if that's allowed under the laws, but maybe consider having, you know, the city council ends at X time. Anyway, thanks for being here on a Monday night. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jocelyn. All right, I'm sorry.
Sandy, this to him again. I think my time's best spent on one particular topic. Um, the scope of the contract um, and the scope of the procurement.
Well, I should re- remind you that the topic under consideration is
Right.
the allegation of an open meeting violation.
Correct. And so both of those have to do with the open meeting, whether it should have been open or executive. And also with the preparation of the city councillors before such a decision was made. Um, the scope of the amount of land, from what I understood, in public discussions changed the entire property. And then the sole source. Um, it was, in my experience of working 30 years in construction, there it didn't even follow normal sole source procurement. Um, I have tried to find online what Montpelier's rules for procurement are and they are very hard to find for professional services. But I cannot imagine anything over $50,000 of some uh, could possibly be done without even explaining the scope beforehand. Usually a sole source contract has the scope clear on on all parties' sides before there's any proposal made. If the scope of services were broker brokerage services, there are other commercial brokers in the state. If it was planning services, there are other planners in the state. If it's a combination of two, I would suggest that there were other options. It was testified in an earlier hearing that White and Burke were the only consultant in the state that could do this work for you. Even if that were true, and I don't think it is. Um, the, the scope of their services should have been clear before the night in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see anybody else in the room. Alan.
I'm old and 1014, Tarrant Street. I will try to stay on track. Hard that was so hard for me. Sitting up that night, back and doing this for 40 years. Hear that there are severe consequences. Now, we don't know what they are yet. It was hard. I didn't get the contract for the problem. Stayed up till midnight. I was the only one left on TV. What's probably most concerning is the contract that White and Burke has put forward. Did not even mention that we spent two and a half years at Savin's working. It says that we didn't even exist. Which is very, very, very odd. If I hadn't seen that contract before, I would have certainly spoke that night. But here we are today. And so I'm asking you to please consider that don't validate this right now. Work on this and figure it out. To ask the public and keep doing what you're doing. This is really hard. I'm a developer and I've done this for 40 years here. So numerous boards. I put together millions of dollars, didn't ask, but together myself to get ready for this project. Find out at the end that I'm not even included as if I worked for two and a half years with Sandy Bitchu, architect Bill McClay. I used the engineering firms of DeWol, McLean, McCain. I've gone through working with the Ilx on design, installation, site work. We modeled our entire project after Act 250, all of them. And we were misled, in my opinion, in December of 2022 and we lost our ability. And so to sit here and watch while I have moved millions of dollars as a developer trying to propound housing in this community. And I'm the only one in this room who has done that, the only one. And I wasn't even included in the contract that came from Tarrant and Gillis. Who sent it to you through White and Burke, as if we didn't work with all these different people, as if we didn't do studies, as if we didn't design a hundred year storm event. As if I didn't follow Act 250 and spend a fortune putting this together. Wasn't even mentioned. It's disturbing. I have worked my tail off on this. I'm an older man. You both all know I have health problems. But time is the most valuable thing we have. You can make more money, you can't make more time. And so to act like those two and a half years from 2020 did not happen. The 2022, when I was told by our previous city manager that the funding runs out in 2030, which it does not. It runs out in 238.
Alan, I'd like to get back on track.
I'm sorry, I had to pretend to. But I have to know. I'm very emotional.
And that was your time, by the way.
Yes, I'll also say I watched when Sandy Bitchu spoke in another meeting. She went 18 minutes and 35 seconds at a time. So is it a personal thing? Uh, I have millions in this project. If anybody else in this room does, let me know.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. But that, I kept a record that Sandy spoke for 18 minutes. Because she said I'm a local. I grew up here. I'm an architect. This was a previous meeting. She remembers it. And she said, I'm not going to step down. I will. But I could actually take Doug's five minutes because he's my partner.
Thank you, Alan.
I will take Doug's if I may.
No, Doug can take his three minutes if he wants. I see. Is there anyone else who would like to be? Yeah. Anybody else online? Jim?
Okay, um, I'd like to speak about, first of all, the going into executive session, which I didn't vote for. And I didn't stay for. Um, I didn't stay for the vote because I had said we can't vote if it's not on the agenda. So I didn't stay to vote. I actually asked Jack in the beginning of the meeting. Can I put something on, can I make a motion on general business and appearances? And he said, no, you can't put, do a motion that's not on the agenda. He said, people might want to comment on it and might want to say something. So I said, well, that's what I thought. I just thought I'd ask, so I didn't do it. And then I see late in the night, he does the same thing. He told me not to. I mean, I guess it's a case of do as I say, but not as I do. He not only did talk about a vote, have a vote that was not on the agenda, he actually voted on it. That's some of the worst behavior I've ever seen. And I've been on the council a lot longer than Jack. In fact, I've been on the council longer than anyone in this city since 1990. And I want to talk about something we all talked about in the beginning of the year. It's under the city of Montpelier's vision, mission and values. I'm going to read one statement off it. The city government will be transparent, accountable, ethical and financially responsible. We were none of that that night. We might as well just throw that one right out the window. I don't even, we all talked about how we want to be transparent. But we have a city manager rushing us into it saying, we have to do this tonight or there will be severe consequences, which I would love to know what those severe consequences are. Because we didn't even have a chance to do it because we were rushed into executive session. It was all done so fast. I mean, we'll be transparent? That's a joke. This council doesn't even know what transparency means. And I said, no, I don't want to be part of this. I am act, you know, a lot of people in this community know me. You know I'm a person of integrity and honesty. You know I'm more dedicated than any of these people sitting here. I've done more for this city as a volunteer than any of them. I've done over 200 meetings since I got back on the council. I'm on the front lines more than any of them are. I'm among the people more than any of them are. I try to be transparent. I got nothing to hide. And I'm not going to listen to this lawyer who's going to tell us to go into executive session. I will not vote for it. I have nothing to hide. I want you all to know what I have to say and I think you should know what we all have to say. But they're going to want to go into executive session because they want to hide. They want, they don't want you to know what's going. I said in so many executive sessions that I didn't want to be in where the talk was well, we, what are we going to do? What are we going to say about this? And I would always say, well, we could start with the truth, but you know what I was always told? No, we want them to know how we want to say it, how we want them to hear it. That's what goes on in executive sessions. Or people knocking people. It's not transparent. Government is supposed to be, I got into government because I hated governments that didn't tell people what was going on. So I became a member of government so I could tell people what's going on. I, it's sad because I've usually sat alone on all the councils that I sat on that felt that way. So like I said, transparency, throw it out the window. They don't even know what it means. Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're, we're faced with decision where I think we need to get advice from a lawyer. We've asked Mike Tarrant to be here so we can work through the requirements of the open meetings law and the and the legal issues that we're potentially going to be faced with in tonight and in potential yeah, civil litigation. And um, most of you have heard me say before that although I'm a lawyer, I'm not the city's lawyer and we should listen to what the city's lawyer has to say. And so at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, one of those double motions. One to uh make a finding that premature uh, public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved in a substantial disadvantage regarding pending or probable civil litigation to which the public body may be a party and also confidential attorney client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body.
Uh, I'll make a motion. I move to find a premature general public knowledge of the city's planned response prior to considering the potential litigation and receiving confidential attorney climate uh, excuse me, attorney client communications would clearly place the council at a substantial disadvantage.
Is there a second? I'll start. Was there any discussion?
Yes. Boy, can't get a better example of what I said than what you're seeing right now. People afraid to talk about stuff in the public. This is your council for you. Let's go in and hide and, you know, and I, you know, that's just lawyer doublespeak because you know what? As a lawyer, you don't have to answer to the public. You can tell us to do this because it's nothing to you to answer to the public. The public is our bosses. And I want to answer to them and that's why I don't want to listen. I won't vote to go into this. I'll go into it, but I will not vote for it. And I highly doubt I'll ever vote to go in executive session again. Because there's that transparency bit. Throw it right out the window. Get a perfect example tonight.
Thanks, Jim. Helen.
Yeah, so because our lobbyist recommended us to go to executive session, I will support the motion. But personally and also as a individual city council, I prefer talking these things publicly. Because everything started us going to the executive session. Uh, I just want to mention that because it's a professional recommendation, I will support the motion.
Thanks, Helen. Anybody else want to be heard? Yeah. No, Steve, I'm not calling on you for this. You've already been heard on this, on this item.
I have not been heard in the discussion on this motion to go into executive session.
You've been heard on the item.
No, I haven't. This is a, this is a different discussion. Anyway, briefly, this is very simple. This is not rocket science. This is, did you or did you not want a vote? And did you or did you not share that? You don't need lawyers vibes on this. Every one of you is intelligent to know that you didn't warn the vote. So there's no need for an executive session. It's in the lawyer's interest to lead you into litigation so he can bill you lots more hours.
Okay, Carrie.
Um, I, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Mayor, you're talking about the rules of conduct at the beginning of this meeting. I think it's really important that we stick to them. When a member of the public wants to speak on an item that they are not uh, granted permission to speak on, I think it's really important to hold them to that. And um, I will also say that I am going to vote in favor of going to executive session because this involves attorney client communication. And I don't think that there's any responsible way for us to do that in public, even though I think we should do as much as we possibly can in public.
Council members, any other comments? Ready to vote? Although, I'm going to call the rule. Helen? Ben?
Yes.
Sal? Jim?
No.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, folks. We'll go and, oh, and the motion should, oh, that was the first motion. That was the motion for finding. Okay, now is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move that based on the passage of the motion to find a substantial disadvantage to the council, I now move to go into executive session to consider potential civil litigation and to receive confidential attorney client communications related thereto. No other matters may be considered. I propose we bring our attorney, Michael Tarrant, and our interim city manager, Kelly Murphy, with us.
Is there a second?
I'll start.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying, oh. We'll do it again. We'll do roll call. Helen?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sal?
No.
Jim?
No.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lots of transparency there.
We are in exec, we are in executive session. We'll step into the room now. We are in exec, we are in executive session. We'll step into the, uh, room next door.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Chair would entertain a motion to exit executive session. Some of, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Well, we have, we're back in executive session. The, the purpose of tonight's meeting was for one very specific issue to discuss the allegation by Stephen Whitaker of open meeting law violation. And there are four allegations alleged designated A, B, C, and D in Mr. Whitaker's notice. And I think the cleanest way to do it is for to take those up in order and consider how we want to handle each one of those. The first item is item A, an allegation that the item was, the contract was not noticed for action and as a consequence, the council violated the open meeting law by taking action on that, on that contract. Is there a motion to, on this item?
I'll make a motion that the council deny the allegation that there was an improper executive session and unwarranted public action.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Folks, do we have discussion on this item?
Hearing none, I'll, well, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say, I'm sorry, Jack, you go ahead if you have something.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, city council agendas do not require warned votes, action items, they require that the agendas describe substantially the items that are going to be discussed.
And then, I agree, we did that. We stayed, it was before the public that we were going to review this particular contract. And, and that's what we did, there's not a requirement that the agenda specifically on any item. In fact, we know that the, we don't always know going into a meeting whether we're gonna be voting on an item or not. So I don't think this is a well-founded complaint. Our group. Folks, are we ready to vote? I'll, I'll take a roll call. Oh, sorry, Adrian, were you raising your hand or not? Okay. Roll call, Alan?
Deny, yes.
Okay, so yes is denying the action, so Alan, yes, Ben?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Jim?
I'm not voting on any of these.
And Carrie?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is approval without, item B, approval without public release of scrutiny. And the gravamen of this claim is that the contract was not made public before it was voted on. And again, in my opinion, this does not violate the open meeting law. In fact, we all know that it's, it's not unusual for us to take action on contracts that have not been made a part of the council packet, not, not been disseminated publicly before action. We enter into collective bargaining agreements with our unions. We enter into other contracts where things are up in the air until the night of the meeting. And we take a vote, we consider it and take a vote at the, at the meeting. So I don't think this is also a well-founded claim. Is, is there a motion with regard to item B?
I'll, I'll move that we deny the allegation that there was a violation of the open meeting law because of approval without public release or scrutiny of the contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Adrian?
I'll just note for this one, I think, you know, based on the law, we didn't violate any laws. But I still truly believe that we should do a better job, at least for myself, in terms of transparency and sharing information that truly impacts our community in terms of the public dollars that we agreed to spend that are yours and ours. And this was, you know, a very, you know, it's an important project for us. And I, you know, as I mentioned to the council, and I'll mention out to the public, that I wish that we did do a little bit more public outreach. I would like to have reviewed that contract in more detail. It was a very late meeting and I voted no, so I'm gonna stick with my no vote. But I really hope in the future that we do a little bit more due diligence and share contracts like this that are so important to the public that they have time to review it. But from a legal perspective, I am gonna vote that this was not an illegal. We didn't do anything illegal on motion B, so I just hope that we do better in the future.
Thanks, Adrian. Palin?
Are we voting?
Um, well, were you raising your hand to vote or do you want to make your comment? No, I saw your hand and I wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start, start with Palin again, Palin?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Jim?
Not voting on these.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we're up to item C. The allegation is that the, seems to be, the allegation is that there is no justification given for a sole source contract or for a competitive bid for the process. And the only thing I would say about this is that this doesn't allege a violation of the open meetings law. To the extent that Mr. Whitaker thinks it might violate some other policy such as our city policy on contracts, that is not before us because the real question, sole question is, does it, did we violate the open meetings law? Is there a motion regarding this?
I move that we deny the allegation of an open meeting law violation because of item C, no valid sole source justification or competitive procurement.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I, I agree that there, there's not an open meeting violation here. But I, I regret that we did not, we did not really provide a sole source justification, which I think we have and which is valid. But it would have, I would have preferred that it had happened prior to the vote. It was late. We we, we wanted to approve the contract. And I regret that we weren't able to provide that information to the public ahead of time.
Thanks, Sal. I'll call the roll again. Palin? Ben?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Jim?
Not voting on it.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the last item, item D, private deliberation of contract terms and contingent compensation. I understand that people have raised some, including Mr. Whitaker, raised some question about whether the terms of the contract were a good idea or, or were in the interests of the public. However, the open meetings law is very clear that contracts are one item that can be subject of of an executive session. I don't think there's any violation. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we deny the claim of an open meeting law violation through item D, private deliberation of contract terms and contingent compensation.
I'll second.
Palin?
Or discuss?
We're just, is there any other discussion?
I just wanna add, like, other items to be mentioned. Again, I don't believe that we violated any law. And I'm very happy that doing that. But at the same time, we have responsibility to the public as elected officials and city staff. So when people ask me all the items, I really wanna explain why we consider them, why we don't consider them. So next time, if I have more information to do that, I will not abstain while we are voting. That's why it is very important to do a better job next time. Thanks.
Thanks, Palin. Peter, I will take your comment.
Um, I, I just wanna observe that although I think you're probably correct that these are not violations of open meeting laws, they do reveal, as even some of your, the council has suggested, a, a lack of genuine transparency and a lack of recognizing that the public needs to understand these things much better than they do. And the responsibility lies with the council and the mayor and the city manager to, to make a much stronger effort to genuinely communicate about matters of great import as this one is. And I, I think there's some soul searching and some strategizing that you guys need to think about so this doesn't happen again and again and again and again.
Thanks, Peter. I'll call the roll. Palin?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Jim? Carrie?
Yes.
And Adrian?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the requested action on item six, allegation of open meeting law violation. We don't have other business before us. Council reports. Jim?
No.
Sal?
Well, I'd just like to say that you know, I've talked to several people in my district about this who contacted me about this. And I've explained it to them and they said, well, I, you know, I understand why you did what you did, but it doesn't look good. And I agree, it doesn't look good. And I think we need to, to, we need to think about what, what we can do to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Thanks, Sal. Ben?
Yeah, I, Sal, I just wanna say I appreciate that, you know, I certainly have had a week of reflection on how that went last week. And it, it doesn't feel good to have people upset about what they perceive as a lack of transparency. I think actually I really appreciated Peter's comments about doing some soul searching about how we can greater communicate around items of significant importance. I think what I have struggled with really since last week, but also since being on council, is the fact that we are in a housing crisis. And we adopted a city plan where we're talking about having to build 75 units every year. And, you know, the reality is, I think a lot of times we get bogged down in details when we as a group need to be focused on collaborative vision. And I think there's an environment of toxicity in these meetings that puts everybody in this kind of defensive place all the time, where we kind of scurry to, you know, make decisions without getting yelled at. And I think the reality is, if we're gonna solve this housing crisis, we need to lead and we need to like commit. And we can't continually revisit decisions that we've already made. And so I, I will commit to working with council and with the mayor and with the community to make sure that we're communicating effectively our strategies, our priorities and our values. But I also think we need to make tough decisions as a group and stand by them if we're going to address the real concerns that are facing our city.
Thanks, Ben. Palin?
Yeah, so we had our listening session last Saturday. We have very good number of people came to our session, a session, this last session. And we talk about the process, we talk about this contract. And my observation is, people just wanna be informed, just wanna be included. And they know that city council is a decision-making body. And they respect, if it is majority or all of us say yes, they respect our decision. I think the only thing they wanna see that, again, we are all neighbors. Like me sitting here doesn't make me different than the rest of my neighbors. So when I go out, I look at their face and I need to explain my vote. If I can explain my vote, why I did, what are my reasons, great. If I cannot explain because the process is in front of it with lack of trust, transparency, and also people feel that there is something happening tricky, then it really makes my job as a neighbor very difficult. So I just wanna be going out, looking at the people's face, even if they don't agree with my vote, they will still respect my vote. So that's why it is so important to have a transparent process. And it's just a learning experience. And I agree, we need to lead, but we need to lead in a right way, right? Let's do the right thing in the right way. Thank you.
Thanks, Palin. Adrian?
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to echo what everyone has said. And I think, you know, we are in a housing crisis and I feel like there is a sense of urgency. But I think we can also couple that with communication, transparency and coordination and respect for each other. I think it's very important in our small little community that we have that everyone knows each other. And we're all neighbors and we most, you know, we pay taxes to support, you know, our, our community. And, you know, we can have urgency, but I do encourage us to please just think through our, our consequences and actions that we take. Because this was an unintended consequence and I knew that this was gonna happen, that our community was gonna get very upset that we didn't share this very important contract with, with folks before we voted on it. And I'm still very upset that that happened. And so I hope in the future, with our sense of urgency that we do have, we do think strategically and not meet at 12 o'clock like we've noted before because no one can make rash decisions at that hour on very important topics. So yes, we are in a housing crisis. Yes, we need to work together. But I think that we also need to be transparent and build that into the process because our neighbors and our community members deserve to be involved in this process. This is, that's my opinion. That is their taxpayer dollars, but they did elect us to represent them. So it is a, a multiple-way street that we are walking on here.
Thanks, Adrian. Carrie?
Yeah, thank you. I, I really, I don't think that there was a legal violation of the open meeting law. And I'm also very appreciative actually that this came before us, so we had a chance to really talk about it. Because I, we could have been more transparent. We should have been more transparent. I would like us in the future to err on the side of being more transparent than not. And, and I think we didn't do that this time and we, we probably could have. And that's separate from, did we violate the law? We may not have violated the law, but I think we could have done it a lot better. I know we could have done a lot better. And so I'm, I'm gonna echo what other people said about committing to really trying to, when, when in doubt, err on the side of, let's be transparent and open. Let's, even though, yes, we have a housing crisis and we needed to make this decision, that, you know, to know when it's, we need to take a second and say, let's just make sure that the public has had a chance to see this and weigh in. So that's what I have to say for the, for the future.
Thanks, Carrie. Why don't you catch me after? Well, we're, we don't, we're, we're not at a top point of the meeting. We're, we're not at the point of the meeting where we're taking comments from the public, but I will have to. All right. Mayor's report, I don't think I have much to add to what people have said. Not at this point in the meeting. You're, you're out of, Alan, 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 you are out of order.
I'm just asking.
You, you are out of order. The I think people have made good points about maintaining transparency, maintaining openness to, to public public input. And I also want to express a great appreciation to to the constructive way that the members of the council worked through the issues tonight. There were complicated legal and political issues. And people have been able to separate the political and public relations issues from the legal issues. And I think that you know, we're elected to do the, make the hard decisions and do the hard work. And that's what we did tonight. Thank you. City clerk's report? Manager?
Just really quickly, not an official report per se, but what I did want to go ahead and say is that we do take these complaints seriously.
And so that's why we brought it forward, to have a conversation about it. And I do think that there's opportunity here. So, you know, there are a few key takes, takeaways that, you know, I know that we'll be thinking about as we proceed and move forward. So I'm just incredibly thankful for the discussion. Thank you.
If there are any change in town for the spirit, I'll just.
Thank you. Okay, folks, at this point, 7:23, we, we are adjourned.